My name is Taylor Kenny with the Bird Company. And so I would just ask that we allow Taylor to give us an update.
Hi, Taylor. Can you hear us?
Hi. Yes, everyone. Sorry about that.
No, no, you're good. This is Mayor Pacheco. How are you?
Hi, I am good. Thank you so much for having me today. It looks like a full house.
Yes, yep. Thank you.
Okay, terrific. And then I would love to hear questions, as I'm sure there are some. And if that works for everyone, I can take it away.
Sounds good. Thank you, Taylor.
Okay, perfect. So my name is Taylor. I am the account manager for Bird. So essentially what my role is, is I work with the city, our local fleet managers, and then the different teams at Bird to try and make sure our program's a success. So anytime there are questions about data or something needs to be done, let's say with the geo-fence or changes to our program, I am the go-to contact for that. So what I did for today was I just put together a couple of slides to look at the last year of our program since launching. I pulled various data points and then talking, I guess, generally about the program. And like I said, I'll leave room for questions. So if it works for everyone, I can go ahead and share my screen.
That'll be great. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Let's see. And apologies, I'm normally using Zoom, so this is a little bit different for Teams. Let me see if this works. Sorry, I'm having some privacy. My computer's not wanting me to let screen recording happen. Apologies, everyone.
You're good.
Do you know where to go to share your screen, Taylor?
I do. It's saying, oh, screen recording. There it is. I'm guessing this meeting is being recorded and it's saying that I need to allow Google to be recorded. Okay. I apologize. It does look like I have to restart my Google to allow it to record this meeting. So if you give me one minute, I do apologize.
Nope, you're good.
Okay. Let me try this one more time. Thank you all for your patience. How is that? Can we see this?
Perfect.
Okay, terrific, terrific. All right. So looking at the data, we have been live now for basically exactly a year. Now, within that year, we weren't operating fully 365 days a year because, as I don't mean to tell you, weather is not always appropriate for scooter use. So what we're going to be looking at today is really data from August, September, October, and then this year from spring on. So from a sample size perspective, while it's a year, it's even more impressive when we look at the data because it wasn't, we didn't have every single month included in this. So looking at ridership over this time, we have seen phenomenal ridership. I do want to call out, too, that we, on average, have about 100 vehicles available at any given time. And with those 100 vehicles, we have seen almost 18,000 individual rides happen. To give you some comparison, too, this is, again, considered really, really high ridership. One of the things to note as well is that even with all of those rides, we're seeing really long rides. So sometimes when we see a high number of rides, they're short, quick trips. But in this community, the rides are actually longer than average. Typically, we see about 10 minutes is the average ride time. And here, we're seeing 24, 25 minutes is our average ride time. So what I say by that is going from point A to point B, it's almost a three-mile trip, which is, again, incredibly high. Our average across all the cities we're in is one mile. So we're seeing a lot of ridership in general with a high volume of rides. And then the rides themselves are very lengthy, which is exciting for us because we're showing that it's not just always a quick trip and then someone leaves the vehicle and doesn't ride again. They are repeat riders and they are really utilizing the service to get around town.
Can I ask questions?
Taylor, can you hold on one second?
Absolutely.
I have a question from a council member. Go ahead, Carl.
Hi, Taylor. Thank you so much. I was just curious.
Sure.
The, I'm also pretty impressed with the data. Do you see in the municipalities where you begin your programs, do you see the first year or two, a kind of inflated usage? You know, it's new, novel. Do you see that kind of taper off a little bit after a couple of years? Or no?
That's a great question. Typically, what we'll see is it will be the first month or two are where we're going to see that spike. And then maybe that novelty wears off. We'll see a lot of riders initially try it and then maybe if it's not for them, not come back to the service. But we've actually seen that ridership has increased. So this year compared to last year, we're seeing more rides and more repeat ridership. So this is actually considered a rarity, too, here, where we're seeing even more repeat ridership than we do in most of our markets. We're live in, I think, over 400 cities now. And this is considered, again, very impressive. So we're not seeing anything taper off. We're actually seeing ridership go up with the same amount of vehicles.
Thank you.
Absolutely. To that point, too, and I talk about repeat ridership again, why that's so exciting for us to see is that if we just see the average rides per rider being one, that means someone tried the service and didn't go back to use it again, which is fine, of course. Sometimes people will visit or they just want to try it that one time. But what we're really looking for is this is a sustainable method of transportation. So in this case, when we're seeing 3.25 average rides per rider per month, that means that the average person is using the service at least three times a month. I also pulled commuter data. Now, this is a bit, I mean, it's not an exact science here because what this is essentially showing is someone going from the same point A to the same point B within a three-hour window, day over day. So over 600 commuters, what that's showing is someone at 8:00 AM one day was taking a same vehicle from point A to point B. And then maybe a week later, within a three-hour window, point A to point B. So what we're seeing here is people are using them from the same location to the same location, day over day. This isn't necessarily capturing everyone who could be using it this way because, again, people's schedules can change or maybe the vehicles aren't in the exact same location deployed. Maybe they have to walk another block to find one. But still exciting to see that we see people who are using it to get from the same locations day over day, not just for entertainment purposes, which, again, is great if you enjoy them for fun. But we do like to see people using it as that form of transportation. And the last stat I have on here is about metric tons of CO2 saved. So essentially, how we kind of do this math, I get asked this a lot, is where are you getting these numbers from? Is that we assume that one out of every three trips on a vehicle would have been a car ride. So that's kind of the industry average. So if we look at that and we look at how long and how many trips we're having, that's where we can come up with the environmental impact that we're having. This is another thing I always like to look at, is where we're seeing riders going. So I know it's kind of probably hard to see this in detail. I can always follow up with more zoomed-in screenshots, too. But one of the things I often hear from cities are, well, where are these trips happening? Are they all just happening in one location? Do we know where the riders are going? Yes. So what we're looking at here are actual heat maps of ride start and end locations. So you can see, again, we have a pretty wide swath here, especially if you look at that ride end locations of where people are going. This is also, again, impressive that on only about 100 vehicles a day, we're seeing a lot of different locations being traveled to, which does make sense when we see that the rides are longer than usual. So in certain cities where we're seeing that trip length is about half a mile, you're going to see it a lot more consolidated. In this market, where we're seeing trips are two, three, four, or five miles long, we're seeing a lot more expansion and spread out of the vehicles as they move their way around town. Something else I wanted to talk to everyone about today, too, is safety. So I know that this is always a focus of ours, making sure that we're sending out appropriate messaging to rider and encouraging them to ride appropriately. One of the biggest things I hear, of course, is how people are riding or where they are parking the vehicles. That is not unique to this market. It's everywhere, kind of, that I work with. But what I do do my best to do is when I hear feedback from city officials on what's going on, working to put out additional messaging. So we do do in-app messaging, push notifications on phones, email blasts. And we can always do more of it as well. So this is something that we continue to have a focus on and are happy to continue to push out and do more of to make sure that we can help our riders' behavior. And kind of on that note, too, one of the things that I know Carla mentioned that everyone was interested in hearing about was any kind of issues that we're hearing or maybe complaints or feedback or questions from the community. So I wanted to make sure everyone was aware that we do have a couple of different ways that people can submit feedback to us. We have a phone number, an email, and an in-app community mode, which essentially is a ticketing system. All of those are sent directly to myself and to our fleet manager. They're the preferred method of contact because that way, anyone is able to do it and we can address the situation quickly. I do know that a lot of times I will just hear directly from the city. People will reach out, contact the city, and then let me know what's going on. Then I relay to our fleet manager, which does take a little bit longer. We try to address every ticket that comes in within a couple of hours. For the most part, I think our average response rate right now is two and a half hours. So sometimes we're quicker, sometimes we're a little bit slower, but we do do our best to respond right away. So this is if there's something where, let's say, a vehicle is parked in the sidewalk. If we don't hear about it or someone else comes up and hops on and rides it away, then it's not something we're going to be able to fix. So this is something that I always really encourage to get the word out and happy to work with, too, is making sure that everyone's aware of how to notify us. So if there is a situation, we can resolve it right away. One of the things we've done, and I put a screenshot over here of this, is also done a lot of geo-fencing. So I think what's kind of exciting for me to see is the first year that we were live, we had a lot of geo-fencing requests. I'm not going to lie. This was one where constantly we were kind of talking of a school or medical center or a downtown area, whatever it is, that needed to be geo-fenced, which I was happy to do. So anytime a request like that comes through, I do it. What that does is it essentially stops the vehicles from operating in those areas. So if there is a concern, I'm happy to work with anyone on that. We rolled out our new B3 vehicles, which respond really well to geo-fencing. And I think that's been a game changer. This year, we have seen significantly less tickets coming in and less geo-fencing requests. So definitely some big wins there on our end. Always open to having more conversations about this.
Taylor, I have a question here.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Carl.
Thank you, Taylor. I was curious, do you have a map of, like, all the areas that are currently geo-fenced? Is that a resource available?
Yeah, absolutely. I don't have it in this deck, but it's definitely something that I can provide. I absolutely do.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Amber.
Another question on geo-fencing. Is there a set of criteria that you use to determine, you know, when working with the city, if it's appropriate to geo-fence an area or not? Or is it just sort of if the city requests, just make it happen?
You know, if I got some kind of request that was like, we want to geo-fence off half of the city, that would be something I would probably push back on. But all the requests that we've received have been very reasonable. It was often, like I said, schools where we don't want them anyway. Perking garages were a big one here. So we geo-fenced a lot of parking garages off where maybe people were riding in appropriately or parking and creating some issues. So anytime I kind of get a request that, yes, it makes sense and it's private property and the owner doesn't want it there or there was some kind of issue, I've never pushed back. I'm always happy to work and make sure that it's a positive partnership.
I think that's it for questions. You can continue. Hold on one second. Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Taylor.
I was going to say, that actually was it. I kind of assumed that in general, I would have quite a few questions. So I really wanted to give everyone the data and I will absolutely be happy to follow up, too, with this presentation as well as a list of the geo-fence or a map of where all the geo-fences are. But I want to make sure I gave everyone time to ask any questions that you might have.
So I've got a couple of questions for you. We'll start with the vice mayor.
Taylor, in the very beginning, we heard about, you know, that other cities have had damage or theft. Do you have, have you had any scooters unaccounted for in Casper?
Yes, there's always some. We call that churn, which essentially is a catch-all term we use for whether it's damaged vehicles or stolen vehicles. But it really hasn't actually been a huge problem here. I would say that damaged vehicles just happen naturally over time. But when we rolled out our new B3 vehicles, we were able to essentially replace all the old vehicles with new vehicles anyway. And they're a lot sturdier and don't have a lot of issues. So no, we really haven't had that many issues since we launched our new B3s.
Do you have any kind of report of anybody, of people who've been injured on these? So maybe the vehicle has crashed or something?
It's a good question. I don't because we only hear about it if, again, someone tells us. So I typically actually say that normally the police department often might have more information on that than I would just because if there was a concern, that's typically where people go. I have not been looped into any conversations, actually, of people who have reached out to Bird saying that they were injured and asking for assistance from us.
Others? Anybody else?
Carl. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Taylor. I was curious. I've used Bird before in other communities, not in Casper yet. I know there's an 18-year-old and up age limit. Could you please explain what, how that restriction looks like? How someone's age is verified, if at all? Only because that's something that I've fielded, you know, numerous questions about is folks seeing younger, you know, 14, 15-year-olds riding them around. What does that verification process look like? Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. So in terms of being 18 or over, that is our program policy. When you download the Bird app, it does ask that you are 18 or over. It's in our rider regulations. And then it's a self, you have to self-attest that you are 18 or over. We do have other tools available we can use to identify underage riders. But sometimes we were concerned to enable them, such as license verification, because it essentially takes an entire population that might not have a license and then they are unable to use a service that is an alternative to cars. So we do have other tools available. If that's something that you wanted to enable, we would be happy to do it. I always just like to make sure everyone's aware of the pros and cons.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions, Taylor.
Perfect. Well, I will say to everyone that we are very excited. Like I said, I don't want anyone to think I'm just saying that the ridership has been terrific. It really has. It's a lot of rides, especially, like I said, when we're looking at a smaller amount of months and not, you know, this is a seasonal market in some senses, right? So to actually see that many rides is really impressive, especially on the amount of vehicles that we have out in the community right now.
Go ahead.
So thank you. Thank you all so much.
Thanks, Taylor. You don't know me, but per tradition, I have one last question before we let you go. I was just curious. So the first year started with 100 scooters. This year, it sounds like we have right around 200. What is your guys' vision? Do you have, are you kind of seeing how this year goes? And then you'll kind of recalibrate again. Do you have an idea of what next year might look like? Thank you.
That's a great question. So yes, last year, we did launch later in the season, which is why we ended up, logistics-wise, I think everyone knows shipping was a little bit crazy last year. So we were only able to launch with 100. This year, we have 200, which means that we have about 100 out on the road. Part of that is because we're always charging them and bringing them in. So there's this swapping going on. We see demand, especially with those rides for riders, being high enough that we would like to increase the amount of vehicles we have in the community. One of the things that we would be interested in understanding is that right now, there is a high per-vehicle fee. So every single vehicle we bring to the community, we are charged on those vehicles. That would be something we'd be interested in having a conversation about, just so that it's viable for us and for our local fleet managers who are in the program.
Thank you. Taylor, thank you so much for giving your presentation and updating us. It sounds like things are going well and it's succeeding and doing good here, so we appreciate it.
Thank you all so much. I really appreciate you having me here today.
Thanks, Taylor.
Thank you.
Bye.
All right. Moving on. Budget amendment number, oh, yeah.
One more question for the chief, if I could.
Yeah, you bet.
Thanks. So chief, it sounds like Taylor said that riders do sign some sort of waiver indicating that they're of age. I'm curious, what sort of capacity do you think your department has to enforce underage riders? Do you guys find yourself writing many tickets for kids operating ATVs or other vehicles underage? Is that something that you guys have the capacity to get very involved with?
I love his last-minute questions, Mayor.
Everyone does.
We are unaware, I am unaware of any interactions we've had with underage people on these scooters. You know, we deal with the odd juvenile riding, an off-road vehicle. It's very low occurrence, very low frequency. That would certainly be an exception. We're just not having problems, nor have I seen an abundance of crashes and injuries from these.
John.
While you're up, if you don't mind. Just a quick question. She had mentioned that the police department would maybe have more insight on injuries and, you know, incidents of that matter. Do you have any awareness?
Mayor, councilwoman, we've not, you know, to my knowledge, and again, not all, not all reports cross my desk, but to my knowledge, there is nothing notable that is going on with these scooters.
Anything else regarding that? Okay.
If we're really interested in trying to find out about injuries, I don't know whether the hospital, because of HIPAA, can say that we have had X number, not who did it, what kind, but just X number of injuries from the scooters. Because that one time I mentioned that I got a call from one of our constituents that wanted me to pass it on. The gentleman in the ER said that that was the fourth one this week. So that may be a way of trying to track that down.
Okay, thanks. Carl?
The only caveat I would add to that is I know a lot of people that own these personally. And so my guess is the hospital doesn't differentiate between rented or owned scooter, which was.
Yeah, there are some personally-owned ones as well.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, to me, what it would say, and we can move on. I mean, we're not hearing an abundance of reports, though, coming back. It sounds like the chief and others aren't saying, oh, my gosh, we've got to, we have injuries coming in, you know, the ton. But it seems like it's being somewhat successful. Yeah, Amber?
I think you're right. If we're looking at, you know, wanting to work with Bird on expanding the number of vehicles, in that renegotiation, I want to, I'd like to talk to them because there's, I believe, that the fee that we charge essentially gets passed on to the riders. And so I have found the rides for short trips here to be not very feasible because they, there's like a minimum $4.17 or something like that, like is the minimum amount you're going to pay for a ride, whether you go, like, one block or... So a lot of trips that I've needed to take downtown, it's like, well, it's four bucks. So by the time I go there and back, it's eight bucks for, you know, five blocks or whatever. So, and I could pay eight bucks to get halfway across town. So I think that that fee creates a pretty high minimum ride amount that you're going to pay each time. So keep that in mind when we renegotiate.
That's a good point, Amber. That's real good. Okay. Thank you all. All right. Budget amendment number one. Zadina?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Carla.
Members of the council. So we wanted to inform you of a budget amendment that Jill and her team have been working on, that if approved by you all tonight, will move forward for formal approval. And so this is the first budget amendment of this fiscal year, FY '23. This is pretty standard operating procedure as far as the primary reason for the budget amendment being to roll over projects and encumbrances that were budgeted in fiscal year '23. Those projects or encumbrances were not completed, or, excuse me, budgeted in fiscal year '22, those were not completed, and now we need to roll those into FY '23 in order to have the spending authority to complete those projects or procurements. So that's the primary reason for this budget amendment, although there are some additional requests. And so I would like to turn over to Jill and her team to give you a little bit more detail about that.
You don't get my team, you just get Jill. Thank you. Mayor, council, as our interim city manager has just said, this is the first budget amendment for fiscal year '23. We typically do three budget amendments each year, one at the beginning, one kind of in the middle, and one at the end. We did kind of five, I think, in COVID year, so that was kind of unusual. So for this budget amendment, though, I would like to kind of start in the middle of the memo. There are three attachments that have different types of rollovers that we're doing. I want to start with the POs and encumbrances because those are something that is, we've got something under contract or we have a purchase order out there that we need to complete. It didn't get done in fiscal year '22, so we do need to roll those forward. You'll notice it's a pretty high dollar amount. We're looking at $27 million. As a comparison, in fiscal year '22, budget amendment one, our project carryovers and encumbrance, oh, sorry, our encumbrances were $15 million. So that's actually quite a big difference. It's mostly related to two projects, and they're both in Andrews Group. So 74% of this budget amendment is actually in the enterprise funds. The two projects that are making up that difference of the $12 million are going to be the sanitary sewer project and the wastewater treatment plant, which is about $7.1 million. And then we also have in the bail fill, as you'll remember, we did the liner, the new cell, which is another 4.8, 4.9. So there's your $12 million. So that is, they went under contract, so they are showing up in that rollover. I'm going to kind of back up now to the attachment A, which is going to be just the project carryovers. So the difference in these is this is something which council has approved, but we do not have under contract yet. In comparison, in fiscal year '22, budget amendment one, it was $18.2 million. So we've actually dropped a little bit. Some of that's probably moved over into our final part. And then the final piece of this is going to be the new request. The new request right now, you're looking at about $9.5 million, but most of that is coming in from money that we had available that we're now going to expend on two particular items. So if you remember back when we talked about budget in, it seems like a long time ago, May, we talked about two items that we would like to do with excess funds that exceed our reserves. The first one is the sinking fund. I know there was quite a bit of discussion about that. So we are looking to move money out of the general fund and into what we're going to call a debt service fund. Right now, it's an LED fund. And we're going to use that for paying our debt service on fire fund A. And then the second item is, we had had, oh, back in '20, '21, '22, we had a wind farm, we had some impact funds from a wind farm in Cedar Springs. So we have been holding on to those funds and they have actually been reserved. We haven't been able to spend them. We looked at how we could spend those and we applied those to different expenditures. So that's going to be about $1.1 million as well. So those are the two major items within that. With that, that's all I've really got. If you have any questions?
Does anybody have any specific questions for Jill? Steve?
So on this, I was trying to figure out what the Cedar Impact meant. That's those, that's wind farm. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, because I've read through that and go.
Yeah, we've been holding on to those for a little while. We've been collecting them and just kind of holding them till we figured out how we can spend them.
Okay.
Any others? Great. Thanks, Jill.
Great, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks for the update. So do we need to give a thumbs up to move forward with that? Or is that something we do at the, officially at the council meeting?
We're supposed to give the thumbs up.
Give the thumbs up to move, okay. Is everybody okay with it? All right. All right, moving on. Tactical rescue vehicle.
Mayor, members of council, you may recall that this discussion actually started when we were talking about... when we were talking about the use of 1.17 funds. The Kasper Police Department was seeking council's approval for purchase of a pre-owned Lenco Bearcat G2 Incident Response Vehicle or a tactical rescue vehicle. And so now the chief has requested to be able to start negotiating for the purchase of this vehicle. So from my time in risk management, I know that officer-involved shootings have become more of a risk concern for our police force than it really ever has been before. And so a vehicle like this really goes far to mitigate that risk. And I also know in talking to colleagues throughout the state in risk management and other police agencies that, you know, while Nautrona County only has one of these units, other agencies in the state, even one smaller than ours, do have two. So with that, I would like to turn time over to Chief McBeaters to kind of talk you through the details of what he's asking for the negotiation.
Chief?
Mayor, council, thank you for the opportunity to review this with you. You know, we've been in contact all along with the manufacturers of these tactical rescue vehicles. And they are, and as you can imagine, they're in high demand right now. There's not very many of the used ones that are available. Currently, they have two in supply. One's a 2006 and one is a 2008. Then the initial asking price was $169,000 and some change. But importantly, is, is the note, is in the memo, that that's our best offer asking price. And so, you know, I've left it to, you know, Carter has, the city manager, has, has his own ideas on how to pay for this. I've not been involved in those discussions with the mayor or with council or with Jill. However, you know, we do have this opportunity. These would be completely refurbished. It comes with a brand-new engine. They're brand-new paint, comes with that new warranty. It's a, it's a, might as well be a new vehicle for, roughly speaking, half the cost.
Questions? Yeah, Lisa?
I guess I do, I know that it's, the note in here says it's going to be possibly paid by the Opportunity Fund, but I guess I would really like to know where this money's really going to be coming from, because I'm, I'm not sure.
So by understanding the Opportunity Fund, because we do have, do we know how much we have with the Opportunity Fund?
I do know. It's $5.5 million.
$5.5 million. Because the Opportunity Fund was established probably about eight years ago or so. And it was not, basically, the Opportunity Fund was for purchases, could be a land, it could have been property, or it could be a building, it could be things like that, any opportunity that wouldn't, normally, we'd have to touch the general fund to have to do that. So that's what it was established for. I think it, over the course of the eight years, I think we initially had maybe $12 million or maybe more.
Just to follow it. So for the police building, when we're remodeling it, isn't a lot of money also coming from the Opportunity Fund?
I do not have the answer to that question. I'm sorry.
That'd be a question. I don't know. It was only made of you, no?
Mayor, councilmember, no, I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that question either, but certainly, we can find out and let you know.
That's a good question. Kyle?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, chief. I have a question for either you or Zulima. Maybe it's more appropriate for Zulima. You mentioned increase in officer-involved shootings. I was wondering, do we have any data on historical trends of historical, you know, officer-involved? I know it's an on-the-spot, probably requires some homework, but I am curious if we have any data on that.
Mayor, councilmember, thank you, but to be clear, I said, I, I think that the concern over officer-involved shooting is what's really kind of escalating over time, just from my experience in risk management. You know, it's, it's a growing problem across the country, and so it caused concern here in our community as well for our law enforcement officers. So I don't want to put it out there that that's an increase, but certainly, the risk and the concern associated with that scenario is certainly increased. And chief, certainly, jump in if you want to add.
Mayor, councilman, you know, again, I'm shooting a little bit from the hip, no pun intended. You know, I think, and even the vice mayor could probably back me up on this. We, as a, as a police department, historically, we probably averaged an officer-involved shooting about once every four years. However, in the last four years, the last four and a half years, I think we're on eight now. And so that's not an indicia of, I don't want to draw too many conclusions from, from that, but I think it's fair to say that societal expectations of law enforcement have changed greatly. The national dialogue on what is the appropriate way to respond to law enforcement has changed dramatically. And so I think it's fair to say, in the state of Wyoming, that, you know, the, the frequency of situations like this has risen dramatically in the last five years.
Thank you, follow-up, if I may? I'm asking you to shoot from the hip again. I apologize, but I'm curious. Other than the recent episode in Evansville, are there any other events or circumstances that come to mind where you would have appreciated the use of this vehicle that would have been put to use? Thank you.
Mayor, councilman, excellent question. And so it's really important to me that we've not characterized this thing as a, as an armored vehicle, you know, a militarized vehicle. You know, I know from personal history, in my former jurisdiction, I served for, for 11 years on, on the special response team, including as a team leader. But I know from my personal experience and the research that is out there, that having equipment like this actually lends itself to successful resolution and successful de-escalation. The ability to show that we have the means to respond to the threats that you're causing, the situation, tends to help people make the logical decision of, hey, I, you know, I think I just need to, to comply with the requests that are being made with me, to go ahead and surrender peacefully. So there is statistics that show that, that ability to, to show, we're equipped, we're ready, we're professional, we're capable of responding to this issue, really helps to solidify in the mind of the aggressor that it's better just to go ahead and surrender. So the answer to your question is, is there's an abundance of times that we, we likely would have had this at least staged in the area and available to use. We would do so out of abundance of professionalism and caution.
Thank you. Could I squeeze in one last one?
You bet.
You mentioned statistics on these vehicles leading to de-escalation and stuff like that. I'd just be, I'd be curious to see that. Thank you.
Mayor, councilman, you know, so there's, the research that I'm referring to is commonly available through the NTOA, the National Tactical Officers Association, where they have an abundance of research out there on the validity of having specialized equipment and specialized teams to handle these threats and the impact that that has on the decisionary discretion of the aggressors.
Thank you. Steve, did you have something?
Yes, you had something, didn't you?
So I've got, so I've got you, Lisa, and Johnny.
Well, Johnny was way beneath before I was.
Oh, okay. Well, I'll go with Lisa, then Johnny. Sorry, Johnny. I saw Lisa so well.
I believe last year you had a report, and I, and it was like a synopsis year over the year of the burglaries and all the crimes and all of those things. And that was very helpful to me, and I'm sure it was very helpful for Kyle. Is there a possibility we could get something like that, just so that we have an idea of the crimes that are happening in the city? Because it's going to help us understand a little bit more for these asks about what the police force is actually doing and what you guys are encountering all the time.
Good chief.
Mayor, councilwoman, you know, we're currently working on the second, end of the second quarter report. And so those, the statistical analysis will be available soon. We'll get that out to council. We are seeing significant increases in notable crimes this year. So this year, year-to-date, as opposed to last year, our automobile burglaries are up way over 100%. Not a small increase. It's a huge increase. This, of note, perhaps to this council, is that being dispatched to a suicidal person is, is up 5% over this time last year. And suicide attempts is up 18%. However, the good news is, is that successful suicides are dramatically, they're down about 50%. So what, what you're seeing right now is the police, your police department is responding to more and more persons suffering from suicidal ideation, and yet we are, we are becoming more and more successful at intervening in those attempts. So increase in number of persons actively engaged in, in a suicide attempt, and yet a 50% decrease in, in completed suicides. Those are a couple of examples of the trends that, that we are seeing, but those property crimes are shockingly high, and the police department is, is working steadfastly to reduce those, those property crimes.
Johnny?
Thank you. I have two questions, if that's okay.
Yeah, Kyle asked three, so you're good. Two, two is good.
As long as I'm like, so, so my first question is just kind of like standard protocol. Like what, what is, what would be considered normal for a police department of our size to have in terms of a vehicle like this, like number, quantity, if any? So that's, maybe I'll just ask that one first.
Mayor, councilwoman, I, I can, I can stand before you with, with clear conscience and say, an agency our size, our complexity, serving a community of our size and our complexity, is very much would be anticipated that there would be a vehicle of this nature in the inventory as a direct, as a direct result of, you know, the needs of society. And so I, with very clear conscience, I can tell you this, it would be the norm for us to have this.
Quick follow-up on that. I, I think I feel comfortable with the pros that you've mentioned. Are there any cons that departments have seen in terms of bringing these into the community and having negative repercussions as a result, maybe increased shootings or?
Mayor, councilwoman, I'm, I'm unaware of any indication that this would actually increase violence in the community. There, there was, you know, in the past decade to 15 years, there's been a great deal of discussion about the arrival of equipment formerly used by the military and was made available to communities, so they didn't have to make purchases like this. Those came with an abundance of problems, not the least of which was image control, because they, they appeared to be something that, you know, most of them arrived in communities looking like they just got off duty. In the Middle East, they weren't appropriately marked, you know, to, to be more reflective of their, of their urban uses in communities across the United States. They also came with an abundance of, of maintenance issues. For example, the standard mine-resistant assault vehicle, the AMRAP, as it's commonly known, a single tire on it was, was more than $100,000. And so you were kind of reliant on things not going wrong with them, but when they did, it kind of circumvented the, the freeness of it. There are no free things in this world. When you get something free like that, they come with it, they come with those hidden expenses. These, these vehicles that we're recommending, council consider, have a long track record. They fit that niche of, of not being overtly aggressive, but they, they fill that void of being able to protect the officers on their mission to, to save lives. And, and so it's, it's, it's in an appropriate middle ground vis a vis of the perceptions and needs of our community.
Okay. Sorry, that was, I snuck in a follow-up. That wasn't my second question. I appreciate that. And that distinction is, is helpful to understand. I think some of us have voiced some concerns about the image and what we might be falling into. So thank you for that. My second question is just, you know, awareness that the county has a vehicle just like this. Can you tell us what the experience has been in terms of if you have or when you've needed to request that? You know, what is that procedure like? Are there, are there ways that that vehicle, by being available, helps and mitigates the fact that your department doesn't have one? Or, yeah, I guess, I'm trying to understand more about what having two will bring to our community.
Mayor, councilwoman, you know, so we, the Kasper Police Department has an outstanding working relationship within the Nautrona County Sheriff's Office. They were fortunate to, to be well-funded, and they were able to purchase one of these. They too had gone down the road of accepting retired vehicles from the military, but, but were uncomfortable with their, the reliability of those vehicles and the efficiency of operations within this jurisdiction. And so we're fortunate that for these many years, we've been able to rely on our working relationship with them to facilitate, you know, the, the use of that. So it's not our vehicle. We don't get to say when it comes out to play. And I don't mean to sound euphemistic when I say it that way. We have to get permission. That invokes, the process is, is we, we make that request, and by state statute, we're authorized to, to make a request to a neighboring agency for assistance. It's up to them whether or not they want to comply, or if they can comply. If their drivers for that vehicle are unavailable, you know, let's say that, you know, just bad circumstances happen, you know, the answer may be no. That, that same vehicle may also be in use for a similar operation. So here recently, we, we mentioned the, in this discussion tonight, the recent incident that occurred in Evansville. That's a classic example of there were multiple things going on with that investigation. And circumstances aligned for us to not have some of those happening all at the same time. But there is that potential. As we get involved in these cross-jurisdictional investigations, cross-jurisdictional incidents, there may be need for more than one. So this is not intended to replace our working relationship with Nautrona County Sheriff's Office. We value that relationship. We are going to continue to rely on them as they rely on us for mutual, mutual aid and support. That includes personnel and equipment, but this is just designed to augment our capacity and to increase our efficiency of response. Instead of having to wait for another agency to wake somebody up, you know, drive in from their perhaps distant residence, get to that vehicle and then get it to our scene, we're going to be able to respond more quickly if we have one to augment this cross-jurisdictional supply of one that we have already.
Steve, Captain?
So far, everybody's been focusing on the law enforcement and the criminal aspect, so to speak, of the use of this vehicle. I noticed in some of the, the things that were in your memo, that this is also, can be used for like search and rescue. And it seemed like it would be a very good vehicle for that purpose, to be able to put several people in, put a trailer behind with either four-wheelers or snow machines, head out, go looking for people. Do you anticipate that use for this? And kind of as the follow-up in the question, has the one that Nautrona County has, has it been used for search and rescue? Or has it strictly been tactical police use?
Mayor, councilman, again, you know, I, I'm 100% confident that in, in our jurisdiction, meaning ourselves, Mills, Evansville, and Nautrona County, and indeed Wyoming Highway Patrol, we, we are not fortunate enough to have things just sitting around for their potential one-time use. We, we are very much habituated to using things for the value that they bring to them. And so these are multi-use vehicles, and indeed, search and rescue is something that falls more into the, the realm of the Nautrona County Sheriff's Office. But again, we support those operations, and we would be able to, to support those operations. So I mean, think back to, you know, spring a year and a half ago, when we had the four feet of snow in one day. Had, had an incident occurred, be it, you know, any number of things. Had an incident occurred, be it, you know, any number of things, that's the vehicle that we would have needed to provide services into the edges of our community. So you bring up valid points. It's not, this is not just about tactical operations. And again, I use the word tactical sparingly, because the ability for these vehicles to be used as rescue vehicles, more and more you see, you know, persons that are involved in active shooter incidents, attempted barricade, police from arriving on scene to, you know, an attempt to increase their chances of success. Vehicles like this can be very helpful to us in mitigating the preparations that people like that are putting into their heinous plans. Did I answer your question?
The one part you didn't answer was, has Nautrona County used theirs for search and rescue, or you may not even know?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, you know, I don't have the specifics on that. I believe in my heart, the answer to that is yes.
I was just curious.
And I've certainly seen their vehicle out on some of the more far-flung, you know, the areas of our county where they needed to be able to get to them. You know, the Sheriff's Office, you know, I think everybody's aware, they have those tracked vehicles. They are forced by the nature of their jurisdiction to have a variety of response vehicles. But those are used as they, as is appropriate. During the summer months, I would tell you that their existing Lingle Bearcat is the appropriate vehicle to do, conduct those type of operations.
No, I was going to say, we aren't, you know, in the sunbelt down south where you don't have the four feet of snow or some of those types of things. And we do have floods like just happened at Lingle, and had two of them. And so we are in a bit of a more frontierish, for lack of a better term, environment. And it sounds like these vehicles also have a very good use in those situations. And that's what I was getting at, is this has more than just the tactical aspect of the vehicle. And I think that's one of the things that probably our public needs to understand as well, is that this will serve other options and other things. That's why I was bringing that up.
Thank you.
I think I was in line next to ask a question. So I actually just have a couple of statements to make, and then maybe a request to make. But as far as, like, these vehicles being new to the community, they're not. And I can tell you from experience, we've had much smaller armored vehicles over the years, but for many years, we've had armored vehicles that we have used to talk barricaded subjects out of houses, suicidal people out of houses, or just to strictly go to situations and end up like Evansville did. Mobilization has always been a problem because of the fact, Chief's correct, you gotta, you gotta get somebody that drives that vehicle out of bed to have them come out and grab that thing. And by the time they get to you, you know, times of the essence when these incidents take place, and when you're waiting for equipment like that to get to you, time goes by, and every second counts. And then another thing, just to reiterate the fact, it's not necessarily Evansville, Mills, bar none, using it. There's many times that the, those particular vehicles and members of the special response team may end up in Glen Rock, or they may end up in Douglas, supporting law enforcement in those areas. And if something happens here, and your equipment is fifty miles away, you need to have a backup plan in place. So, and then I think if you look at the world in general, if everybody's been watching the news lately, and it's bigger cities, and I get it, but it can happen here too. You have police officers who will actively be making arrests, and you have citizens that are actively fighting police officers to assist people in getting away. I mean, that's, that's what this world has come to. And so violence is on the rise. When I talk about a request, I've brought it up to Carter in the past, and I would make the request that, I don't think that, and it's no fault on behalf of the police department, but I think it would be very beneficial that you have your most significant event of the day that takes place, and if there's some way that, without putting all the facts in there, the council could be made aware of, on a daily basis, of what's going on out there. I think we would, everybody here would have a better understanding of what really takes place in this town. Because I can tell you, being on the other side, you know, I used to, for years, you just, you'd look at the worst part of everybody, and now I'm on the happy side of life again. And so there's nothing wrong in this town, but I know otherwise. I know that there's a ton of crime that happens out there. And until you read it and see it, and see what happens on a daily basis, I don't think you really understand what takes place in this town and the need for pieces of equipment like this. So. Anybody else?
Councilmember Pollock.
Thank you. Would just like to, thanks for the added detail that you're providing, that you've provided, because I do want to acknowledge that there's been some level of discomfort from citizens that I have received about the concept of having this vehicle be brought into the department. So I, I appreciate y'all, and I may refer folks on to you or you who might have a better, or you, who might have better insight into it, because I do just want to say that I think that there's some level of discomfort, and I think we should be aware of it, and also, you know, understanding of like why this might make people, citizens, a little uneasy. I think, you know, that some of those realities that you're speaking of do make people uneasy, and the way we respond to them, you know, but, you know, continued transparency down with your part, I think goes a long way to that.
Chief.
Mayor, Councilmember Pollock, I just want you to know that we take the perceptions of our community seriously. So I have always had a problem with, you know, communities that take these large militarized vehicles, and they emblazon them with, you know, tactical assault vehicle, they've put, you know, and so if you, you know, our negotiations would be for this vehicle to be painted blue, not black, not military draft olive, not military draft desert, it's going to be blue. It's going to match our, although it may not be as vibrant a blue as our police units, it will be appropriately labeled, not as that type of vehicle, but rather, this is our rescue vehicle. And so we want to mitigate those concerns as best as we can, and we want to be responsive to those concerns. So it's not our intent to roll this thing out and parade it down the streets with the message it bells true with the Kasper Police Department. That sounds rough when I say that. That is not our intent. This is something that we have, it's ready to be used when the time is right, but it has multiple uses, and, you know, not the least of, it's not in that planned usage to intimidate our citizens or to cause them concern. And so I take exception to police executives, law enforcement executives across the nation who have kind of bowed to their tactical teams and, you know, done these things because they make no sense. I think they ought to be painted in a way that doesn't make them look like a military vehicle. I think they should be properly labeled as a police vehicle, and not as an aggressive assault vehicle, for lack of a better term. And so we want to mitigate those concerns as best as we can. This vehicle that we're asking for council's consideration to begin negotiations for would be completely repainted for something that's more commensurate with our community's expectations and needs.
Other questions? Concerns? Okay. Oh, go ahead, Kyle.
Thank you. I had a couple of things on my mind, let's see if I can get to them all. Councilwoman Anger Breton, you mentioned data earlier as far as burglars and stuff. The chief did a great job explaining the data that they're working on. I believe you were referring to the data collected by WASCOP. All that historical data can be found on their website. They do annual summaries. You're right, I love that data, and I reference that website frequently. So for any folks that might be interested, you can find at least historical data there. Sounds like they're compiling it from the last year. My question to you, Chief, is, shoot from the hip again, can you, do you have any idea how many times you've requested the use of the vehicle from the Nautrona County Sheriff's Office? That's, I guess, my first question. And then, let's go one at a time. Thank you.
Mayor, Councilman, I'm not keeping track of those numbers. You know, it's, please understand the mutual aid agreement that we have in place with Nautrona County. The special response team that we have in place is a joint team. It's managed by Nautrona County, but it is also staffed with members of the Kasper Police Department, the Mills Police Department, Evansville Police Department. So we have multiple officers of the Kasper Police Department are attached to that team. They're activated, and they, you know, it's not a full-time duty, it's a collateral duty. And so we are intimately involved with these instances where that vehicle is needed. And so that, because they're involved as it is, that's a natural progression of the need for it, because the supervisor of that vehicle is generally on scene with Nautrona County. And so generally speaking, I don't have to request that vehicle's use, except for in planned operations. And so I would, I would be absolutely just guessing if I were to report for you a number of those planned operations. Those do exist, but those, we have the benefit of timing, and we get to choose the location and time of those events. And so being able to use those vehicles on those, we make that request frequently, and because of the timing, we're able to schedule that in. When it comes to the instantaneous stuff, that really is a function of we're working side by side with our law enforcement professionals in Nautrona County, and those decisions are happening very quick to summon somebody to go get that. Now, when the incident that requires that stuff is happening on the streets, those can evolve very, very quickly. And oftentimes, the line officers out on the streets are forced to resolve those issues, even while the special response team members are being paged out and responding, oftentimes the line-level people have had to resolve that before they get there. And this is, that would be an example of the importance of having quick access to a vehicle of this nature, rather than relying upon the, our joint jurisdictional team to arrive on scene, make assessments, and now send somebody else now to go get that vehicle and respond back to the scene. We can bypass a lot of that when our line-level people are dealing with it before the rest of the team gets activated.
Thank you for the follow-up. Let me, of course. So the Vice Mayor mentioned use of armored vehicles in the past. Curious, do we have anything like this currently in our inventory? Have we in the past? What would you, of our current inventory, what is most comparable to a vehicle of this nature? Thank you.
Mayor, nothing in our current inventory compares to this. Nothing whatsoever.
Past included? Sorry, I should have included past inventory as well.
The, I can't speak to the past acquisitions of the police department. It's my belief that we've had various iterations of former military ambulances, things of that nature. They have all been hand-me-downs, each and every one of them. They're horribly outdated, many of them decades old by the time they got to us, horribly maintained. There has been attempts by the county to acquire and use some of those military vehicles that was unsuccessful. And so right now, we have this, this one vehicle, and I believe the Vice Mayor would be able to tell you some of those past iterations, but they've proven to be time and time again, I believe, a flash in the pan. We used them for a while, they become unten, they became untenable very quickly. You can see by the nature of this vehicle, you know, they last. They have a proven track history. The vehicle that we're recommending, that Council Consider, comes with that whole new drivetrain. It might as well be a new vehicle. And so we can expect to get a couple decades of use out of this vehicle.
Thank you. Any other questions for Chief before we make a decision? Thanks, Chief. So just talking with Zulema, it sounds like our decision tonight really is about giving the Chief the opportunity to go ahead and negotiate the price on it, and to go from that. And then, I know Lisa brought up the Opportunity Fund, I mean, that can be brought back, discussion, where that comes from. I think we can have that. Is that fair to say?
I believe so.
Okay. Yeah.
Thanks, Mayor. I didn't have any further questions from the Chief, but before we make a decision, I just have some things I needed to get off my chest. First, I really appreciate the perspective shared by the Chief, some of the questions asked by Councilman Kathy. I do think it's important that the public realize this is not a binary, black and white issues, you know, as is often the case, people respond very reactively to issues like this in front of council and act like it's such an easy decision. I think the Chief has provided plenty of justification why a vehicle like this could be put to good use, save officer lives, used for search and rescue, multipurpose, getting it for a deal. So I think there's plenty of justifications that I find a hard time disagreeing with. That being said, Councilwoman Pollock brought up the uneasiness that folks in our community have, and I'll admit, I share some of that uneasiness. For some of the reasons I've mentioned before, I do appreciate the Chief making the distinction between militarized vehicles that have, you know, through the, I forget the name of the program, but there was a federal program that made access to that equipment a lot easier to municipalities, and so I appreciate the distinction you made between that. I still struggle a bit though with this specific issue. I mean, one of the things that comes to mind, if we have any local data, I'd be curious to hear it, but in my own independent research, I was finding that police officers and firefighters often are more likely to die by suicide than in the line of duty. Some of those reports, if you take into account underreporting, twice as likely. And so we'll be talking about the wellness app and employee assistance program stuff later, so I'll have some comments to make there. But I just wonder, as someone who tries to remain completely objective, lead, you know, kind of let myself be led where the data takes me, it does make me wonder if an investment like this might be better spent addressing mental health concerns or some of the more intangible outcomes that we'd like to see from the department. That all being said, I know I'm coming from a place of total ignorance. I haven't taken the Chief up on his offer for a ride-along yet. I'm a bit embarrassed by that, it's been a year and a half, so that's just my bad. I've never worked a day on the line my entire life, so I am absolutely speaking from a place of ignorance in some respect. But again, just as somebody who appreciates the data, evaluates the data, I do wonder whether our money could be better spent. If the goal is to save the lives of our first responders, it does make me wonder if the money could be more effectively spent elsewhere.
Steve.
Just two things I would say to that, is that, first of all, this is not brand-new. Once again, we've bought multiple vehicles in the past, and bought multiple because of the fact we had to take parts from one to make another one work. These have saved people's lives in the past. It's not just our first responders we're trying to save, it's individuals that are in situations that have to be evacuated out of those situations to save their lives. So to me, it's money well-spent, just simply for the fact that, you know, you can't, if you don't have the right equipment out there to take care of the situation, your people's lives are being put in danger out there. And so you need to make sure that, this goes back to my argument about the fire department. You gotta have, you've got to give them the equipment they need in order to get the job done. I will tell you that if I were on the other side of the fence, and I was in a situation, I would want these guys to have every piece of equipment available to save my butt or somebody else's butt, and get them out of there. So at the end of the day, picking up, you know, trying to save pennies and quarters because, and place them elsewhere because we don't think that it's needed, until the one time that it is needed, and you don't have the equipment there, and somebody dies because of that decision. So to me, it's been, it's been here. This is not, this is not brand-new. And I get it, that people are a little anxious about having equipment like this in this town, but it's been here forever, smaller scale than what these are, but it's been here, and it's been very needed in the past, it's been very useful in the past. So coming from that line of work, I'm biased on that side, that, and I'm sure there's a couple officers, I know one in particular, that's still walking to this day, that would have probably liked to have that piece of equipment out there the day that he got shot. So it happens. It happens in this town, and, yeah, I could talk forever about it. I think, I think it's a needed piece of equipment.
Other comments? Okay. Okay. So, basically, oh, good, John.
Yeah, oh, just quickly, I mean, I, I think, just to add, you know, a couple of, of my thoughts too, because I know I've asked a lot of questions and I, and I have also come to this, trying to be as objective as possible and knowing that there are narratives everywhere, you know, there's always a narrative about something and trying to figure out what this means to us in our context, in our city. And I think it's really helpful to have insight from somebody who was in the profession. It's really helpful to have, Chief, your reassurance that, that this is not something that is meant to intimidate or to militarize our department. And I, I'm actually really relieved to hear even just like the paint choices and just knowing that, that there will be decisions around this being a part of our community that help, you know, broaden perspectives on it that aren't that the police is cracking down. And, and I just, I don't, I don't think that's where we're at as a community in terms of trying to create those barriers between our law enforcement and our citizens and I, I hope that that can continue. And so, I, I also do think just fiscally, I mean, if we're going to make the investment, I think this probably is the right vehicle to make the investment on, just given the fact that the price is where it's at. I mean, it's one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five, I mean, or best offer, but I mean, that's from what I understand, maybe the equivalent of, of, it's less than a couple cars. So, really, you know, when you're comparing what we spend on, on resources and on equipment, I do feel like it's reasonable in, in that regard if it's going to, you know, increase the, the, you know, the, the spectrum of, of services and, and safety that the community and our department experiences. So, I would just reiterate and support what Amber said in terms of trying to create a constructive dialogue around it and anything that any of us can do to help educate people who have questions and to just continue talking about it in a way that is, you know, that provides the amount of detail and the experience that I think has been shared in this room. I think that's really important because it is, I mean, initially when I heard it, I was like, ah, not here, please, but I think this really does help illuminate that, that there's nuance to this conversation. And so, I've just appreciated, I know I've spent a lot of time on it, but it's really helped establish some facts for me that, that were very obscure. And so, I'm just grateful for everybody to contribute and spend the time on this, so.
Okay, so a thumbs up if you give the Chief the go-ahead to go start negotiating and moving forward. Passes. All right. Hogodon subsidy. So, Lema, this is probably your wheelhouse.
And, councilmembers, yes, this is actually my topic, so I'm gonna vacate this chair and go to the front of the room where I will be presenting. Hopefully, we have the presentation. Hold on.
Do you need me to get the budget for you?
Yeah, Chief, that would be helpful, actually. Thank you. Mayor, members of council, this is going to be the first of many opportunities I will have to come speak to you about our recreation enterprise funds and their subsidies. And so, I, I think we're scheduled just about every work session from now through the end of the year. So today, of course, we are talking about Hogodon and their subsidy. And so, we wanted to start with a season recap. So this is a timeline of some of the notable events in our season. Really, the key point here is that we got a very late start to our season. In fact, it was early December before the temps were even cold enough for us to start making snow. We didn't open until December twenty-third and we only had two runs open, our bunny slope and our boomerang slope. But, of exciting, notable event is that on New Year's Eve, we had our first ever night skiing with the lights up at Hogodon. Again, two runs open, bunny and boomerang. Despite the fact that we got a slow start, we saw some of our biggest skier days that we've ever seen at our area. So January twenty-ninth, that was our largest visitor day. Eight hundred and thirty-six skiers visited the area that day. Despite the fact that at that point, still all the runs were not open, I think we had about twenty-six runs open on that day. On February thirteenth, we were finally able to, thanks to several inches of snow, open all twenty-eight runs at the area. March twentieth, we celebrated our winter carnival, which is an annual event at the ski area. And then, we closed April tenth for the season, giving us eighty-seven total skier days. And the decision was made late in the season to expand our season for a week, really to give some, some extra value to our season passes for our season pass holders. So here is another recap. So for our total operation, we sold thirteen hundred and twenty-nine passes, three hundred and sixty-six passes, of which were related to the night skiing operation. We had seventy-three hundred and ninety-three lift tickets sold, almost two thousand of which were lift tickets for the night skiing operation, so that's exciting. Our total revenue, six hundred and nineteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars, with total expenses just under eight hundred and ninety thousand, for a cost recovery of seventy percent, which is really the best for the last five years certainly, but one of our best on record. We wanted to dive in a little bit more into some night skiing details. We're all very, very excited that night skiing was such a successful endeavor for us and are very grateful to our donors that helped make that happen, are here by the way tonight in case you wanted to ask some specific questions of them. So, Friday night average one hundred and one. So of course, night skiing was only open on Friday nights and Saturday nights to the public. Thursday nights and Wednesday nights, lanes were open to the ski teams to practice. So, Vegas public night, one o, or average public night on Fridays, one oh one. Average Saturday nights, one forty-three. Our Vegas night was a Saturday, two hundred and seventy-five skiers on the hill in the evening, which is exciting. So the total revenue for night skiing, just over seventy-one thousand dollars. Our total expenses, calculated for just the night skiing operations, is estimated at just over forty-two thousand with a total profit of just under twenty-nine thousand, which is really exciting. And of course, contributed to the overall subsidy reduction for us, for the operation. And then here are just some, some skier visit totals. I think it's really impressive to say that we had almost nineteen thousand visitors to the ski area this year.
So, Lema, Councilmember Kathy, have a question?
Yes, sir.
Was the biggest day, that one twenty-nine, was that a race weekend?
Mayor, councilmember, for the night skiing operation?
No, the...
Chief, can you go, or, sorry.
When you were going through, you said the, the largest visitor day was the twenty-ninth of January and I was wondering if that was a race weekend? Back another one.
Oh, okay. So that was our biggest skier visit day, that was a Saturday, eight hundred and some visitors.
Was that a race day?
Mayor, if I may turn to my team and try to get confirmation, do you know if that was a race day?
It was not.
That was just an open...
It was not a race day. Was, as a follow-up to that, was that largest night skiing that Saturday night?
No.
So it was a different Saturday night?
Correct.
Okay. I was just trying to get a, a feel for, for usage. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Okay. So if there are no other questions about the recap of the season, you know, despite the fact that we had such a great season, fact of the matter is Hogodon is still a subsidized operation. And of course, the city council made goals from twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-three to address that subsidy in our, in our recreation enterprises. And so, your goal is to complete a broad-based study of all the actions that could be undertaken to reduce that investment of the general fund into these recreation programs, should those general fund dollars become unavailable. And so, subcategories of that goal were to complete reports for all funding sources, complete a list of adverse reactions to programs should the funding be cut, determine the needed rate increases that each facility would have to undergo to break even, and then update business plans. So, we're here tonight to give you an update on A through C and then we will take your feedback and start working on our updated business plans. So, my team has been working really hard on this goal since last fall when I started and they actually started long before I was even here, so I appreciate their efforts. So, to address the funding sources, specific to Hogodon, funding sources have stayed pretty consistent over time. We have daily lift ticket revenue, we have season pass revenue, we have lift ticket revenue that's specific to the classes that are taught. And then we have our rentals and leases, which includes the food and beverage operation that's managed by OBG three sixty. And then we have our subsidy, we have the general fund contribution and we have the perpetual care contribution. And so, you can see that that general fund contribution does account for about thirty percent of our revenue source and so that's what we're trying to decrease as much as possible moving forward. So, the second, you know, sub-bullet of our goal was to compile a list of adverse reactions to programs should the funding be cut. And so, we currently have a lot of programs within the Hogodon programming that include reduced or, or even free passes or lift tickets for, for certain groups of individuals. A lot of those are user groups and it's actually built into our user group agreements that we will provide them, you know, free passes or lift privileges at, at no cost. But we also do provide free passes to anybody over the age of seventy, anybody under the age of six. And so, in my estimation, you know, if, if we needed to reduce the subsidy for that operation, we would have to eliminate or reduce those programs and really look at, at our discounted and comped passes and lift tickets. Certainly, rate increases would absolutely be needed in order to cover the loss of that revenue. And then we actually really did some thorough evaluation of whether we should look at eliminating ancillary services and I mean like our rentals, our ski school, our food and beverage service, you know, because they do have operational costs associated with them. However, when we look at that, we would actually be losing more revenue than we would be saving in operational expense and so it doesn't really make sense to do that. And the same with closing weekdays. You might recall from one of the previous slides, our slowest days are Wednesdays and Thursdays. However, we still sell enough lift tickets in those days to be more than the operating costs for those days would be. So those two really don't make a lot of sense for us, which really just kind of leaves us here. And also, with strategizing that we will need to do in order to reduce our expenses and increase our revenues, which we'll be talking about very shortly. So, the third subsection of this goal was to determine needed rate increases for each facility to break even. Pete Myers helped me to build a, a rate model that we'll share with you tonight, that we'll dive much deeper into that. But, before we do that, I do want to talk to you guys about some of the strategies that we have come up with to decrease those expenses and increase our revenue.
So, Lema, Elisa had a question.
For the summer months, do you, have you had any kind of reports or anything of just opening the lodge up and having it more like a tourist attraction and people could ride a particular lift and things of that nature?
Mayor, councilmember, we're, we're certainly exploring our summer use possibilities. So, we do actually have about three miles, correct me if I'm wrong, of completed summer trails that can be hiked or biked at the area, built by staff and volunteers. We also rent the lodge during the summer for events, especially weddings. You know, beyond that, we haven't gotten into the summer market too much, but we're definitely looking at opportunities, one of which would be OBG bringing concerts, festivals, those kinds of events up to the area, you know, for recreational enjoyment. So, constantly looking for those opportunities to expand into the summer months as, as a way to generate some additional revenue. So, some of the proposed strategies I wanted to visit with you about include restructured agreements and honestly, this is probably one that's more in the works or already done as opposed to proposed. But of course, you know, in July of twenty-twenty-two, we did sign a contract amendment that would extend our relationship with OBG three sixty for the management of not only the Ford Wyoming Center, but also the food and beverage service at Hogodon. And so, through that agreement, we were able to negotiate a fifteen thousand dollar reduction in their management fee each year, which is pretty significant. We were also able to provide incentive to OBG three sixty to bring those events to our facility, so really trying to push those concerts and those, you know, those festivals and different, and different events that would serve OBG in, in creating more revenue, but would also create revenue for the city of Casper. And then, one part of the agreement that had always existed but never really been evaluated or, or pursued much, is that corporate sponsorships and naming rights. And so, we do have agreements for beverage service, but really asking OBG to look at some other opportunities in that area to see if we can get some additional revenue in that way. We are currently negotiating an agreement, a lease agreement with Mountain Sports for the rental operation. Mountain Sports has, has done operations for quite a long time and so we're looking to just renew their agreement. That agreement will come with a slight increase to what they pay the city, the, the portion that they pay the city of their revenues. In addition, we're trying to negotiate some of those comp passes and, and see if we can recover a little bit more of that expense by not completely comping out their passes for their employees. And then, user group comp passes, looking at similar things, like what can we do to recover at least some of the costs rather than just giving it all away for free? We want to reduce operational costs and, and one kind of low-hanging fruit that we see is seven thousand dollars that we budgeted in FY twenty-three for credit card fees. It's becoming more and more common for those fees to be passed on to the consumer and certainly Hogodon allows for other forms of payment, so that is a personal choice that the customer would be making to pay that fee in order for the, to have the convenience of paying the credit card. So, so we do plan to implement that and hopefully save that seven thousand dollars. In years past, we have spent over ten, twelve, fifteen thousand dollars in credit card fees and this is across all of my funds, so you'll be hearing this over and over and over again. And then, really just working with our superintendent and his team to monitor those expenses really closely and adjust as the season goes on. If we're seeing, you know, decreases in revenues, then we need to cut back on some of our expenses. We need to cut back particularly when it comes to material and personnel. If we can do without it, we should in order to, to meet all those subsidy goals that we have. We really are trying to add value to our season passes. So, season passes are kind of the basis, they're, they're a solid foundation of our revenue source because really the season pass holders are taking a risk and they are paying that pass amount not maybe knowing if we're gonna have a great snow season or we're gonna have a terrible snow season. And so, that's guaranteed revenue for us regardless of what the snow does. And so, that, it's important for us to encourage season pass buying and in order to do that, we need to add value to those passes for our customers. So, we are looking at season ticket holder appreciation events and discounts at the resort, but we're also looking to provide valuable discounts to other ski areas. You know, anecdotally, I've been told that we have skiers in our community that will buy the Hogodon pass just for the discounts that they're able to access other areas in the region or even the country. And so, we have a, a pretty good list of partnerships that we have now and we're, we just are constantly continuing to expand that partnership, add value to those passes for employees, or, excuse me, for our customers. Then we, we're also always looking for opportunities to drive new business to the area and so, one such thing that is actually underway right now is a new ArcGIS web app that it will be launching this fall. We want to set the release, try to drum up some excitement about the season. And so, this is a representation of that project. We've worked really closely with Casper College, city's IT and GIS departments to, to get this going and it's really an exciting, fantastic product. But it allows a lot of interaction with, with customers who get onto our website. They can see which, which runs are lit, they can see by green, blue, or black what the difficulty of the runs are. They'll be able to tell by the width of the line whether the runs are groomed or not. And then we will also be able to, to share instantaneously with the public if runs are closed or open. So, a really nice interactive tool that we'll be able to use hopefully to get people excited, go to our website and eventually come to our area. We're also exploring an IndyPass program. So, this is a partnership agreement with the IndyPass company that pays us for other skiers to come to our resort. So, when a skier comes to us, they get a discounted ticket, but then the IndyPass company pays us revenue to fill in for that loss with the discount. So, we're just examining that, that is not a promise, but a lot of smaller areas in, in the country are looking at that as a way to drive business to their areas and so we are also looking at that. This year, we are implementing user group meetings preseason, during the season, and postseason, and these are our Mountain Sports, our ski school, our food and beverage, and then all of the city staff and our ski patrol, bringing all the users together periodically throughout the season so that we can identify opportunities and we can identify challenges, we can pivot quickly and make those corrections, because ultimately what we all want is for the user experience to be really great and for us to all be successful. So I think that collaboration will be really powerful in kind of lifting us all up. I have been in preliminary discussions with the Neutrona County Parks and Rec Director just to try to see if there's an opportunity for us. You know, they have Nordic skiing, we have alpine skiing, can we offer discounts for passes if people buy both? Also, they do not have a lodge right now still, and so are there opportunities to advertise with their customer bases to drive business to the lodge, whether it's to ski or to eat or to take a lesson, whatever the case may be? So just in the infancy of starting those conversations, but they seem very open to it, and so we're grateful for that. And then you should be familiar with the fact that we did sign an agreement with Visit Casper, they are purchasing a bus, and I would like access to that bus in the winter to get skiers up and down off the mountain, and then also potentially during the summer if we are able to host large events in a way to get people safely up and down. So those are some of our plans to hopefully drive some new business. And then last but not least, expanding our snowmaking and our lighting up there, I think would be game-changing for us. Snowmaking and snow harvesting really extends our ski season, it helps us to open sooner or stay open later, and so those are really important operations, so we do try to invest time and dollars in that. And then lighting Dreadnaught, which is arguably our most popular run at the area, and the terrain park, would just really open up so many opportunities for us not only to get more customers there in the evening, but to offer races, ski school and, or, excuse me, our school, race teams, as well as our club team. You know, to be able to race at night would be, you know, huge for us. So now we're going to kind of switch gears to the spreadsheet because I'd like the opportunity to sort of show you what I think some of these strategies will get us without any increases to rates, at least not yet. So the FY twenty-three budget is already set. We've estimated our revenues based on current rates. Mayor, remember in twenty twenty-one, you guys did approve to increase rates at Hogodon? Those increases focused mainly on lift tickets, and then we reduced the preseason discount for passes, but we did not change the pass rate. So my recommendation is that we not look to increase rates right now, but we probably would be looking at evaluating rates again in twenty twenty-three in advance of the twenty-three, twenty-four ski season. So I'm going to quickly try to show you how this, how this model works. So this is our current state. So these are the revenues that were projected in the FY twenty-three budget for Hogodon in the various categories that I, it described earlier. These sales objectives actually match the sales that we made last year. So these are based on sales that we actually had in FY twenty-two, and then averages based on revenues that we earned versus that actual sale point. And so our total revenue is estimated for FY twenty-three, six hundred and forty thousand. Our projected cost to operate for the year will be just over a million. So the subsidy that we need for the fund in FY twenty-three is three hundred and seventy-six thousand almost. So per budget, our cost recovery will, or cost recovery will be sixty-three percent. The resolution that was passed in twenty eighteen set our cost recovery goal at sixty percent, so that's just slightly better. Then I want to go down here to the rate adjustments portion. We can just keep operating for a minute. Okay, so here is where we have an opportunity to actually change what the rates look like. So we can do it on a percentage basis, we can do it on a cost, like a dollar basis. We can also look at, okay, by doing some of the strategies that I talked about before, we may be able to boost attendance, and then adversely, if you were to raise rates, you may expect to decrease attendance, right? So that is built in there. And then this is the rental and concession area where we just know what those are based on the agreements that we have with those folks. And so Pete, go ahead and help us zoom out just a little bit. So changes here impacted this, so this is this model with the changes reflected here. And then down here, changes here also show you current price of tickets. If we adjust them based on this, this is what your new ticket price will be. Okay, so pretty comprehensive model that we feel good about to share with you. So I want to point out that in this kind of current optimized tab, I am showing you what I believe that we can accomplish with minimal rate increases. Okay, so just by implementing the strategies to save costs, to improve revenue, so let me try to explain these a little bit. So I talked about our negotiation with Mountain Sports. So we're looking at half-price tickets essentially for their staff rather than free tickets, and then a minimal increase to the free passes that we currently give now to people age seventy and older or under age six. This is really only intended to cover the administrative costs and the materials to print the passes. Then this forty thousand dollars is quite a big increase. So in the FY twenty-three budget, which was completed, of course, like in March, we estimated the food and beverage revenue would be about twenty thousand dollars. Very pleased to hear just in the last couple of weeks that we will actually be getting a check for about forty-three thousand dollars for food and beverage concession or service at Hogodon, and that was under the last agreement, thirty-five thousand dollar management fee. So if you factor the fifteen thousand dollar savings in management fee plus the twenty-three-ish thousand dollars in increased revenue over what was originally projected, that's where this forty thousand dollar increase comes from, and then the one percent increase that we'll see in the Mountain Sports agreement for what they give us based on their sales. Then again, between the bus, between the marketing and the website and the value add for our season ticket holders, just a minimal increase of three percent. If we could just make three percent increase in our daily tickets and our season passes, with these changes, we're estimating we could get to a hundred thousand dollars in subsidy saving. The other factor in this is new revenue sources. We're really considering maybe a nominal sponsorship and naming right to the tune of about ten or fifteen thousand dollars, and if we could even get one concert or one event, you know, we estimate we could bring probably about ten thousand dollars to the area in a year. So thirteen thousand dollar reduction in expenses, those personnel, those materials, and that seven thousand dollar sales tax, and then added revenues, and we're at a hundred thousand dollar savings, bringing our general fund infusion to about two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. I think this is really realistic in the next year or so, probably not FY twenty-three, but certainly moving forward, I think we could accomplish this pretty readily. However, the assignment was if there was no general fund investment, what would that look like? And so I prepared two additional models for you guys to consider, but take any questions about this first.
Amber.
Thank you. On the, the three percent attendance increase, can you, you said you feel like that's attainable. What has the trajectory looked like over the last few years in terms of increased user rates or decreased, what has it been?
Mayor, council member, so one of the basis for that analysis is the fact that we increased ticket rates last year and did not see a decrease. In fact, we saw a significant increase in our visitorship. And so, you know, the one thing that COVID did for us is that we did not close our area when many places did, and so a lot of regional skiers started coming to us that maybe didn't before, and I think we're seeing some repeat customer base from that, so that is definitely a benefit to us. And the more that we can develop those partnerships and potentially the IndyPass, I think the more that we'll get those people coming through to go to maybe more known areas like in Jackson, Snowy Range, those kinds of places, then we become a destination for them to stop even if it's just for a day or two.
Follow-up. That's really interesting, about the folks who maybe came during COVID and have come back. Are we tracking any of that? Like folks who, like if they, if they bought a season ticket, you know, season pass, are we tracking that they buy year over year? Are we able to track any of the visitor information, or do we just have numbers?
Mayor, council member, so I have asked my team for numbers, so I haven't necessarily seen names, but I do believe that we get the names of all of our season pass holders and could probably develop a mechanism year to year to kind of track that and see how many repeats we're getting.
Okay, curious, thanks.
Good.
Thank you, Mayor. I got a couple of questions. It's just one of those nights, I don't know why.
You want us to be here late?
That must be it, yep, we didn't stay late enough the other night, so I'm stretching it. So a couple ones. First, it sounds like we collect some basic information from season pass purchasers. Do we collect email addresses, I wonder? It'd be great to be able to blast all the season ticket, you know, season pass purchasers for one year and email, blast them the next year to make sure at least all those people are rebuying. I was just curious if we're currently doing that, aim to be doing that?
Mayor, council member, yes, I do believe that we do get email addresses.
If they want.
If they want to share them.
Okay.
And then, so along those same lines, we are also examining a point-of-sale system. Right now, we don't, we do have a point-of-sale system, obviously, but we don't have one specific to ski area operations, and so I think that hinders us a little bit in some of that tracking and those, those abilities to be able to reach past customers really easily. And so as we evaluate new point-of-sale software, we will be looking at what value-add services they can provide for us to help with that.
Thank you. Follow-up? Sorry, I'm interested to see the rest of your presentation, but it might be more relevant to ask here. I was curious, considering the success of the night skiing, thirty thousand dollars in the black, is there any exploration or has there been any discussion about expanding the night season this coming year?
Mayor, council member, so I think to say this coming year is probably not realistic. However, in my next item on the agenda, you will be hearing about our intention to apply for an outdoor recreation grant in order to fund lighting of Dreadnaught in the train park.
Thank you. Squeeze the one more here. Thank you. So you spoke earlier about discussion of eliminating ancillary services. You said that wouldn't make sense because they keep you in the black. You talked about reducing weekday usage, but that didn't make sense because it keeps you in the black. I'm curious, where does the majority of the subsidy come from if it's not the amount of days that we're open, if it's not the ancillary services we're providing? Where does the subsidy come? Can you help me understand that a little bit more clearly? Thank you.
Mayor, thank you. So that's a great question, and I think much like all of my funds, the subsidy comes primarily from the personnel expense. And so we operate eighty-seven ski days a year, but we have staff employed three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And although we have a very small full-time staff, that is an expense, and the season that we're not open, we're incurring that expense without any additional revenue. So, but that's when critical maintenance functions happen, right? That's when we're maintenance, maintenance-ing our ski lift, that's when we're fixing our snowmaking lines, dredging our pond, I mean, all of those important activities are happening during the summer months, so I need that staff. We just don't make revenue during those months to offset that expense. However, to council member Inga Redson's point, we're looking at opportunities to offer some summer activities that will bring us some revenue in the summer months.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. All right, so then the challenge comes with, okay, what does it look like if the subsidy needs to be reduced? The council gives direction to say, no, hundred thousand dollars is not good enough. Salima, you need to reduce the subsidy even further. So the next tab is what it potentially looks like if we were to cut the subsidy in half, so approximately a hundred and eighty-seven, a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. So wait here to size down maybe just a little bit. And so assuming all of the same strategies for reducing costs and increasing revenues are applied here, the next step is to change our rates. And so this model shows that we would need daily lift ticket increases, we would also need season pass ticket increases, and by the way, when we increase these, we're probably not going to see an increase in our, in our attendance, and so we bring this back down to zero, and then we really kind of focus on those comp passes as well in order to recover those costs. And so if you were to scroll over just a little bit, then you start seeing that we are getting to full adult day lift tickets at sixty dollars and fifty cents, which is really starting to price us out of the market. Snow King right now, I think, is fifty-nine dollars for an adult day pass, and we are not a Jackson resort, as much as we would love to be, we're just not. So the concern is that we start getting into these price increases that are going to price us out, we're going to lose so much of the customer base that then our revenue actually ends up going down. But that is what it looks like. And then the really, really dire story under a zero subsidy, which of course we would love to get to though, is that we would have to significantly increase our rates. Do you go to the zero subsidy? Perfect. You know, and then you're talking forty percent increases in our season pass cost, complete elimination. So this, this forty-plus dollar amount, right now, we add that preseason pass discount, and so we would completely eliminate that discount, we would add forty percent on top of the cost, we would, you know, some twenty-five percent or more increase on our daily lift prices, you know, bringing them to really kind of unrealistic amounts probably to get customers to come visit our area. But we wanted to show you what that really looks like. We're talking probably twenty-five to forty percent increase in rates.
Do you have any modeling for either the half subsidy or the zero subsidy? What type of attendance increase it would take to get to that point if there was no change in the rate, if only the attendance increase?
Mayor, council member, we did not, but I think through this model, we could probably come up with some figures that show what our attendance would need to be, because if you scroll up a little bit, Pete, you know, we can adjust this attendance amount manually to show, you know, what the revenues would then do and then how that would impact our subsidy.
Good. You don't have to do it at this moment, but I am just interested. Obviously, I would like to see rates stay low and more people be using the asset. That would be the preferred way of making more revenue for everybody, I think, but I'm just, just interested like how high that number would have to go to get to even a half subsidy.
Okay.
And what, what type of, of marketing spend might be required to make, you know, something like that happen, and additionally, if there would be, you know, added staff needs and that sort of thing, you know, if we're dealing with those volumes of people, sort of, whereas our like optimal user rate versus staffing costs sort of breakdown?
Mayor, council member, yeah, we're happy to do that analysis. It'll take a little while probably to put all those pieces together. I do want to mention that we are very fortunate to have Rachel in the city manager's office. She's been helping really across the Parks and Rec department with our marketing efforts, and so we will be utilizing her quite a lot at Hogodon this season to try to ramp up those efforts to get people to the area. And really, OBG three sixty, Kendra Zeiler, is, has been really helpful in helping us with marketing too, so we'll just continue to ramp those efforts as well. And honestly, I can't, I can't speak enough to how much impact I think lighting Dreadnaught will have and getting a bus that we can actually use to transport folks up and down. Thanks.
Something that people will need to realize going along with, with your comments, Amber, about having to, where we would have to go on attendance to get the revenue. You start getting attendance up too high, and you will start losing customers because they won't want to be waiting in the lift line. And so there winds up being a happy medium in there that to be able to get to that number, you may have to come in and put in a high-speed quad, which is big money, and your operational cost goes up. So I'm not sure that just increasing ridership or usage from a skier standpoint would, would answer all of our questions. So just as a thought out there.
Charlie.
So my, thank you. My question's completely related to that, just in terms of, do you, do you have an optimal figure in terms of users per day? And if you do, do you, how do we compare to that currently?
Mayor, councilmember, actually, to defer to my staff. Chris, I guess my question would be, on our eight-hundred-and-thirty-six visitor Saturday, you know, what did our lift lines look like? How long were people waiting? What was the congestion like? It seems like our capacity is higher than that, I know, but could you speak to that just a little bit?
So, our capacity is, our capacity is much higher than that. On the day we had, we've had several days a year in the eight hundreds, that was the highest. But, the lift line is running right around fifteen to twenty minutes, which, if anybody's skiing Colorado, that's pretty much a standard lift line time. So, I don't feel too bad about it. You're correct that we would have to invest in this, a larger lift, if we were to go that. And we have looked at that. About that. But, I think that there are weekday opportunities that we're working at with the high school as far as them bringing up groups to do lessons on Wednesdays and Thursdays, and in the evening especially. We've had really good luck with the race teams, have expanded to almost a hundred and fifty kids now, and they train on Wednesdays and Thursday nights. So, we have more opportunity to expand in those routes. Our weekends have been very good in the last few years, so, and we do see that trend growing. And we would like to track more people as to find out where they're coming from.
Mayor.
Oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to add that we've also been working with Brad Murphy and his team at OBG to really brainstorm some, some cool things that we can do with the food and beverage service during the ski season, bringing music into the lounge, or into the lodge, offering, you know, specials and different things. So, so we're brainstorming some creative ways that our user groups can also attract additional skiers to the area, and maybe they stay longer even too, so.
Carl and Steve.
Thank you, Mayor. And thanks, Zalima, for all this information. You may already be aware, but I was curious. I know the university created a hospitality degree in the past couple of years, and I ran across the Wyoming Outdoor Recreation Tourism and Hospitality Initiative, or WORTH is the acronym, and it's a new hub for the state's tourism, hospitality, and recreation industry. They're launching a three-point-fourteen million, uh, three-point-one-four million is allocated by the governor through the partnership, and from the website, it's to quote, "Aid the industry." WORTH will offer services such as market analysis and applied research projects led by faculty and students. It will conduct detailed business analysis and studies for the industry. Companies, towns, or organizations can approve, can approach WORTH for help evaluating their ideas. I'm curious, have we explored any sort of participation in that program? Or otherwise able to take advantage of maybe some of that funding to get us some more comprehensive data to help us inform our decisions as we go forward? Thank you.
Mayor, councilmember, so I am aware of the hospitality and outdoor rec programs at Casper College. In fact, I was invited to join their steering committee for the curriculum, so I have been engaged in that way. However, I was not aware of WORTH, and so, we will definitely reach out and find out what the opportunities are there. In my conversations with Michael Brown, who is the Parks and Rec Director for the county, he did give me some information on who they have used for studies. They've recently done wayfinding study and a trail study, and so, we've been looking at, at maybe utilizing those resources as well, just to try to help in our kind of master planning efforts and, and make sure that as we're growing, we're growing smartly and, and doing things the right way to, to bolster the visitor experience and our revenues.
Thank you. I'll send you that, ma'am.
Thank you.
Well, the comment was made that we run twenty-minute lift lines, and that's about average in Colorado. But if you look at the ratio of lift line time to ski time, you're going to find that ours are way down compared to that, and we will, at some point, wind up losing ridership as well because of the lift lines. Because I know I won't go up there if there's going to be eight hundred people there. It's just, just not worth it for the, to stand in line for twenty minutes for a five-minute run down the hill. So, that's the other thing we, game we have to play. So, we do need to be careful about that as well.
Any other questions for Zalima or the team?
So, Zalima, what do you need from us tonight?
So, really, I am looking, Mayor, for, you know, any additional ideas that you might have on strategies that we haven't considered, as well as, you know, your approval, thumbs up to, to kind of explore these strategies further and start to implement some of these. Most of them will come in the way of agreements that you will have to formally adopt in regular business meetings. Some of them are policy changes as far as, you know, a few of the changes such as, you know, passing that sales tax, or excuse me, credit card burden onto the customer base, so. But if you're okay with us starting to vet these out just a little bit more and start working on some agreements, we will move forward in that direction.
Just a thought is maybe partnering up with a hotel? And then, maybe somebody could then buy a day pass at the hotel, they could then drive them up. I think that that, so if you have out-of-towners that didn't have anything to do, that might be, be an idea to kind of help. And then, the hotels typically have shuttle buses that they might charge the people, but that might be something to, to try.
Mayor, councilmember, I have had conversations with a few of the hotel concessioners in town about those kinds of things, and I, and certainly already, a lot of them do drive business up the hill for us, so we appreciate that, but yes, we can definitely explore some more formal agreements, absolutely.
Yeah, the only I'd like to say is that this is, it's like an incredible lot of work. And you guys are, you guys are the professionals, you guys are the experts. You know how best to move forward with that. I mean, and so, when we see these types of things, I mean, we can give recommendations, but, I mean, quite frankly, I mean, we're, we sit here in these chairs, and you guys are the ones on the day-to-day work and doing the work to do that. And so, I, I feel good about this process and the strategy that you guys are moving forward with. Appreciate the time and the effort that you guys put into this, so that's my stand. So, thank you for the, everybody that put the time and effort and the work to put this together.
No. No, I think your twenty-five dollars for the seventy and over, I think we can live with that, so. Because I am in that, I waited twenty-eight years to get a free pass, and now you're going to take it away. But what I was going to say is, back in eighty-eight, when I was in Farmington, and we would go up to Purgatory, I think it's now called the Durango area or whatever, but a kid's season pass at that time was thirty-five dollars. So, us being at twenty-five, I think is still way good deal for anybody. So, that was the one thing, the comment I wanted to make, so, was about the, the younger ones as well, so.
I think the optimized plan that you have here looks really good, and I, I'm in support of the, the passing on of the credit card fees, though I have seen that be a bit touchy for folks in, not in this context, but it's happening in, in my industry as well, and, you know, in a lot, a lot of places it's happening because it's extraordinarily expensive to process credit cards. So, I would just encourage, if that is the approach that you're recommending that the city takes, I'm, I'm in favor of, but figure out how we can best inform people of that, make sure that people are very clear on it, and, and figure out how we, how we message it, how we provide, you know, options for folks and advance warning so that they can prepare otherwise if they would rather avoid that fee. I just think it'll take, it takes education, because it's a change that, and that people can get a little bit, I have found, irritated by that, even though, you know, it's typically three percent or something in that vein. It can feel like a, a personal insult to folks sometimes, I think, so it's not meant to be that. It's meant to, you know, cover the cost of, of the convenience, as you said, but I think we should be pretty thoughtful about how we handle that with our customers.
Thank you. Point well taken. We anticipate that there's going to be some pushback. I would just point people to our Fall Fest, where, you know, last year, I think we had thirty-nine thousand dollars in sale passes that day because they could buy on the hill without.
Yep.
Yeah, well, we will definitely provide some opportunities. And to councilmember Kathy's point, you know, certainly, as we start, you know, changing these historically free or very discounted pass rates, we are going to get pushback. The community, the skiing community is not going to be happy about that, and so, we're trying to moderate it as much as possible, but understanding that it is a cost of doing business that we need to try to recover.
I'll get all ninety of us in here, the parents of the under-sixes in the old forest, so.
All right, is everybody okay with the strategy for them to move forward?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Who's the spreadsheet guy, is it Pete?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good job. That's a comprehensive spreadsheet you got there, man.
Spreadsheet wizard.
We must.
All right, outdoor recreation grants. Zalima, you're back.
I'm back. Thank you very much. This is also an item coming out of the Parks and Recreation areas, so we wanted to have an opportunity to inform council, much like Andrew Beamer did last work session, about our intention to apply for some outdoor recreation grants. So, about twelve million dollars in ARPA funds are being made available through the State Outdoor Recreation, Wyoming Office of Outdoor Recreation, and so, these will be distributed as competitive grants for our municipalities and our nonprofits. And so, we do have the intention to apply. We have partnered very closely with the Natchitoches County Rec Collaborative, as well as several of our user groups, including the Platte River Trails Trust, the Hoganon Night Skiing Project, and the Second Hop Shooters Club, to really identify the projects that we think have the best opportunity to be funded, that have known funding sources. And so, we just wanted an opportunity to talk to you guys about that tonight. And so, representatives from each of those groups are here, if you have questions about their projects. The two projects that the city of Casper will be submitting our own applications for will be upgrades to three boat ramps in the community. That is one that will be in the Riverview Park area, one that will be at the Tate Pump House adjacent to that building owned by the Platte River Trails Trust, and then, potentially, a third near the old Parkway Plaza, the Clarion, whatever that is now. So, West Western, yeah. West Western, thank you. So, we will be looking perhaps at that one as well, it just depends. But, so that's one project that we are looking to apply for as the city. And then, the second project is to add water connections and upgrade the power service to the individual camps, camp sites at the Isaac Walton Campground. So, those are the two projects that the city will do independently. The other grant applications will be submitted by the nonprofits that lead these other user groups. And so, with that, I would open it up to any questions the council has for me or for them.
Questions about the outdoor recreation grant?
Steve, are the, are the guys at Second Hop planning on doing some extra grants on their own besides what was listed here?
Mayor, we have representatives from Second Hop here, so I would love for them to answer that question for you.
Mayor, councilmembers, we are, we're anticipating going for the grant maximum because we feel like we can hit the, we can hit our ten percent match to hit the, the grant maximum. We, we have some grants from, this last year, we got a grant from Gamed Fish from Pittman Roberts Funds, which is the tax that you pay every time you buy ammunition or any, any type of hunting license, things like that. We also have some in-kind, or where are sort of in-kind coming from?
Well, we have some from the city itself. We've also have some.
Thank you, by the way. Wait, I don't know if you know much about the, the complex out there, but we're Casper Shooters Club, and we're a nonprofit that runs it. The city is the landlord. And we had an office and bathroom built out there a couple of years ago, and if you were on the council at that time, you might, may have seen those, those funds come through. That's pretty much been it. We, we haven't really done any improvements, expansions of any type, and as we're getting into this, we're new to this game. In this, in this grant game, like Angela squared away. She seems to have a favorite thing down. And we're brand new to it, so we're, we're learning on the fly here, but we are pursuing as much in-kind, including for private donations, there, there may be some oilfield type that, that need to do something with that land out there that, that may give us some in-kind also to increase the matching. But yes, we do, long, long answer, short question, yes, we do have some other in-kind.
Are you still looking for excess rotor mill from the city?
Mayor, councilmembers, absolutely.
Okay. I just wanted to get that on record.
Other question for Zalima and the others? Okay, you just need a thumbs up from us?
Yes.
Everybody okay with them, person?
Yes, and please just let us know how we can support them.
Great opportunity. Okay, thank you for coming by.
Very appreciate it.
Cortico Wellness App.
Mayor, councilmembers, so you may recall at your last regular business meeting, you did approve an agreement with Lex Cole for the usage of the Cortico Wellness App. So, council has given direction in the past that the city should pursue avenues to address mental health with all of our employees, not just our, our public safety employees. And so, this is just one tool that our human resources department will be using to do just that. And so, I would invite Tracy and, and/or Nicole to, to give you some more details on that.
Mayor, council, as Zalima said last week, you approved the purchase of the Cortico Wellness App, so we're here to just share some more details and answer any questions that you may have. You have a handout that kind of gives you some visuals of what the app can look like. It is fully customizable, it's completely anonymous, and once it's configured, our employees will have access to it four-seven. It provides a variety of resources to employees with everything from a therapist finder to self-assessments on alcohol use or depression or PTSD. When looking at the, the handout, that front page there with the cell phones on it, that just shows you the different examples of how we can customize it for our groups. So, we will be having three different configurations, one for police, one for fire, and then one for the general employee group. The core elements of the app will be the same across the board. However, for police and fire, they will have unique elements to them, such as like peer support information and maybe specialized therapists and that sort of thing that relate to first responder treatment. Let's see. Also, in our memo, I had noted that, you know, our employee assistance program usage is fairly low. It averages about five to seven and a half percent every year, and we're at about six and a half percent of our full-time employees that utilize that service. But on the flip side, we have almost doubled our workers' comp claims for our first responders that are getting mental health treatment. So, we're hopeful that this app will increase our usage of all of our city benefits related to mental health and wellbeing, and also hopefully decrease any stigma that employees might face when they're seeking help. So, happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, that was Nicole.
Yes.
Um, so, it sounds like we do have some degree of, um, flexibility with, uh, I, I was looking at their website, and it looked like they had kind of four main options. It was firefighter, law enforcement, dispatch, and corrections. So, are we picking from those four? It sounds like you, you said there was kind of a general employee one. Do we have the ability to modify those kind of four baseline offerings?
Yes, yes. So, the police will include dispatch, fire will be there on the path, and then the general employee group. So, for example, police will have their logo, their colors, their peer support, employees' photos and information, and the general employee group will be the general city logo and that sort of thing. But it's a fully customizable.
Thank you.
Quick call.
Follow-up if I may, thank you. I would be, uh, I imagine we kind of have a baseline for what our utilization is of our EAP programs and stuff, and I guess I would just... And I guess I would just be, um, wanting to make sure that as we roll out this software over the course of the next year or two, we're just kind of comparing against that baseline to establish, you know, I hope we're gonna measure out what sort of outcomes we get from this app. I downloaded some of their data sheets and stuff and wasn't super impressed with the information that they were providing. I couldn't find any peer reviewed articles or anything like that, so I was a little disappointed. Not to always harp on data, but when I don't have any, it's super frustrating for me, so. Um, but yeah, I, I guess I would just want to make sure that we're tracking outcomes and making sure that we're getting kind of the value of it, with it being a subscription service, this is twenty-seven thousand a year, you know, in perpetuity. And so just want to make sure that we're getting the outcomes we are hoping for.
Uh, Mayor, council member. So with Cortico, they take a lot of pride in the confidentiality feature that they offer. And that is why they don't have a lot of statistics, because they profess it's anonymous, and it truly is anonymous. So the data that we would get from using the app will be very basic. It'll be thirty users a month, a hundred users a month. But it won't take us into the depths of like what people scored on their self-assessments or anything like that. It will be very, very basic information, which is probably why you aren't able to find it.
It might be part of it.
Yep.
Could I squeeze in my third follow up for the fifth, sixth time tonight? So yeah, I, I guess reducing the stigma is definitely the biggest thing to me. Background being a mental health stigma is a huge variable in all of this. A twenty nineteen survey from University of Phoenix found, found that nearly half of all first responders believed there would be repercussions on the job for seeking counseling. And so I would be curious, in addition to the app, what sort of other initiatives are we taking in the police department, fire, other where to reduce that stigma, to clarify to our folks that are first responders or just, you know, general employees in those areas, that there will be no repercussions, it's actually encouraged for you to seek these services. Uh, could you illustrate to us what else is being done in that regard? Thank you.
Sure, Mayor, council. I, I will say, I think that, you know, seeing an increase in those workers' comp claims is kind of showing that that's being normalized because we've heard employees in public safety that have sought treatment are talking to each other and saying they had a good experience and sharing it with their peers, and then those individuals are also seeking treatment. Both police and fire have their own peer support groups and their own paths. The police department has additional services for specialized counselors and that sort of thing. So with this, HR will be promoting all of the above to all of the workers.
Thank you. Steve Caddy.
Will it be possible for, and what I'm asking about now is for the ski patrol? Because the biggest part of our ski patrol are volunteers. And is it possible, if there were another Christmas Eve incident, you may not even know what I'm talking about, but, okay. But if there were another Christmas Eve incident, is it possible for those people to be able to access this on a specific basis or anything? Because by and large, we don't have those, but, you know, that was an extreme. If you've ever seen somebody that's hit a tower pole, those, yeah, anyhow. But yeah, those can shake you up for quite some time as well. And so that's what I was wondering if this would potentially be available to them.
Mayor, council, yes. So under the general employee group, it'll be a general login, so we will ask the staff to share that with special volunteers on those, during those.
Zalima.
Mayor, council member, I'd also like to add that in our agreement with the volunteer ski patrol, we do offer counseling services through Central Wyoming Counseling Center.
Very good.
Specifically.
It's been a few years since I've actually been on the patrol, but I had some very good friends who were on that incident. And I've been on somewhere, guy hit a tower, and so, yeah, they.
Absolutely, we recognize that those critical volunteers come across some, some very traumatic instances. And so we have for several years been operating them, services through Central Wyoming Counseling Center. And this could potentially just be one more tool.
Very good, thank you, appreciate that.
So I'd just say this is a great, another tool in the arsenal to continue to do that. It takes multiple things in mental health, takes multiple types of opportunities to, to do that and encouraging and doing those types. And I know the chief's committed, and I know the city's committed to really trying to do those things. And so twenty-seven thousand is a drop in the hat for the continued safety and mental health safety of our employees, so. So, that's great. Any other questions for Nicole?
Thank you.
All right, thanks for the information, Nicole. All right, agenda review, do we have anything, Zalima?
Mayor, in the interest of time, I think that unless you guys have specific questions, you can review the grid on your own. Certainly reference the last page if you have an item of interest and you want to see where that may be slated. And then a shameless plug for myself, as I mentioned, I will be discussing our rec subsidies with you guys several times over the next several months.
Anybody have anything? Um, I don't think we have anything on the legislative review, unless you do.
No, sir.
Okay. Uh, okay, council around the table.
I don't have anything tonight, thank you.
Steve.
Made the Chili's opening Monday morning and made the Science Zone Monday afternoon. And to hear their plans for the future at the Science Zone was, was quite interesting. And, yeah, they're, they will probably definitely, not probably, definitely, they will be here because they're wanting, they figured for their expansion, they're wanting about ten million dollars. And they want to expand here locally, plus they're ultimately wanting to get a, a traveling road show to be able to take to communities throughout the state to show, show those kinds of things. So that was, that was kind of why I went, was to, to be able to see what they were looking at and get in kind of on the ground for what they're gonna be coming to us for, so.
Awesome.
Yeah. And then, yeah.
Awesome. Kyle.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to Councilman Cathy for showing up to the Science Zone this week. I'm a board member for the museum outside of my role on council. And if you haven't been to their new location at the old Ashley Furniture Building on, is that Collins? Uh, so they, yeah, they moved out from the Slumberland Basement, it's been maybe a year or so. Uh, and so if you haven't been to the new location, I highly recommend it. Uh, they're doing cool things over there, probably the tail end of their summer camp season. I don't know if they have any left, but they do really cool summer camps too. So if your kids like to be outdoors and explore, I would encourage you to take a look. I hope I'm not misstating anything, but I believe Captain Patrick McJunkin is retiring from the Casper Fire Department after twenty-five years of service. And this Thursday, at Fire Station Three, between three and five, they're having a retirement party, so.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, perfect.
Uh, so yeah, if you'd like to help the captain celebrate his years of service and retirement, that's where there'll be Thursday from three to five. And then the Casper Police Department is doing their National Night Out until eight PM tonight. So, uh, you got an hour to catch that over at David Street Station. They also served food at the Special Olympic Summer Sports Classic last Friday. So thanks to the Casper Police Department for volunteering and for the National Night Out. I think it's an awesome event to make our police department accessible to the public and kind of build good rapport with the citizens, so. That's all I got.
Thank you, thanks. Lisa.
There is something that I would like to see if we could add to the agenda. I had spoke with Fire Chief Flack, and I'd like to have him do a presentation on the safe zones at the firehouses. And then also the lack of cameras in these safe zones.
Council, okay with that in that?
Yeah, okay, sounds good.
And then I just want to commend Zalima, but for being timely, there's been a lot of complaints about the parks and the equipment and things of that nature. And so I just send all that information over to her, and then they're just, they're reactive, so I appreciate it. Thank you very much. I hope you don't get too irritated with me, like, there's another one.
Thanks, Lisa. Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
So something is just on my mind that I, I don't have anything specifically, but just our roundtable discussions when we go council around the table. I always find it to be an opportunity to share. What I really like is sharing what's happened in our community, the issues that are coming up in our community. And I think sometimes it's easy to veer off into things that I think, that may not pertain per se to city council and to maybe even our community. And so it's an opportunity for us to, I, I think, in the years that I've been on it, an opportunity to bring up things that maybe a citizen is, is talking about specifically. It could be the parks, could be things that are happening up, could have been the bird, the birds, you know, that's what we talked about. That's why we had that presentation, because we had some people talking about those things, or even saying the positive things like, like the Science Zone. So that's kind of how I see the roundtable and opportunity to do those types of things. And so I kind of hope we stay focused on those types of things and not veer too far off into things that are a little bit out of our wheelhouse. So I hope that makes sense, so. Thank you so much, that's all I've got. And so now we're gonna go into a special council meeting to go into an executive session tonight. And I'll call the August ninth, twenty twenty-two special council meeting to order. The chair would entertain a motion by minute action, excuse the absence, of Councilmember Johnson. So moved by Councilmember, I think it was Gamroth, seconded by Councilmember Paul. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any say no, say nay, sorry. Motion passes. A notice of an executive session take place at this date and during this meeting was given. We have matters to discuss regarding land acquisition. Therefore, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn into an executive session. Isn't Al, isn't Al with us?
I think he was.
Bruce, are you with us?
Yeah, he's still.
I am.
Okay, good, yeah, yeah, thank you. The chair entertained a motion to adjourn into an executive session and at the conclusion of that executive session to reconvene this special meeting solely for purposes of adjournment of this special meeting.
So moved.
Moved by the vice mayor, seconded by Councilmember Soderlin. There being a majority of members present and a motion to adjourn into an executive session. And having been moved and seconded in that motion requiring a two-thirds majority of the council present, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any nays, motion passes. Greater than two-thirds majority of the council present voted in favor of the motion, we are hereby adjourned to an executive session.